Hello out there. It's great to see you. Hi Reagan.
Hi.
Okay, let's convene. Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll please.
Sure, Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mrs. Pugh.
Here.
Mrs. Pomus.
Here.
Ms. Roscoe, present. Ms. Loesch and Ms. Major are excused.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review this evening's agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any further corrections, additions, deletions we want to make before we begin?
No.
I'm looking at Linda.
I was thinking about poor Norma. I was like, her hair might fall out if we say we want to change something right now.
Okay, all in favor of adopting, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Pomus, seconded by Mrs. Pugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. This is not pulling up.
See, when technology...
Me and technology just help.
Yet when it fails, Mrs. Pugh always has paper.
And I recycle.
Oh, that's good. Or do you just keep everything?
No.
No, okay.
I would move that the Board of Education convene to executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized in Colorado revised statute pursuant to CRS 2464024F to discuss matters around contract with co-chief operating officers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The following people will be in executive session. Stephen Seibert, Jeanne Roscoe, Kelly Pomus, Linda Pugh, and extend an invitation to John Rogerson and Wendy Berhansel.
Want to come? No? Can you hang out here?
Well, good evening, everyone. The Board returns after 53 minutes of executive session. Reconvening in regular session. We've already adopted the agenda this evening. We're going to wait just a moment for our fourth board member to arrive. We didn't have a break in between of the two sessions, so we'll give Jeanne a moment to return.
Oh, I have a mouse.
Are you guys excited for the end of the year? It's drawing near, yes?
Do you know how many days left you have?
Are you counting down? Do you know how many days, hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, soon? Sure. If you would like to.
What she's...
She's going to go say aye.
How about summer plans?
So you're making summer plans yet?
Yes.
Yes? You all getting jobs? You have? No? Maybe?
Side hustles, people. Side hustles.
Yes, according to Kelly, you're all students, you're full-time students, but you could have a side hustle. Mowing lawns? Knock on a door? This is my side hustle. You ready, Jeanne?
Yeah, you guys locked me out. I went to the restroom and then it's locked and I had to walk all the way around and get my stuff.
We locked Jeanne out.
We're sorry.
It was Ms. Major.
Okay, 6:05. We are reconvening in regular session, joined by Ms. Major.
Hello.
How are you?
Oh, I'm super, thanks.
Good. We have showcasing schools this evening. Item four, we're going to start with 4.1.
Oh, one.
The Pledge of Allegiance and the mission statement. And this evening, we have Monterey Elementary. I grew up one block up Monterey from Monterey Elementary, so I was right there with you guys a long time ago, but that's my neighborhood. So those leading the pledge, if they would come up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
All right, thank you, guys. Now, we have certificates for you.
Here, come on up here. And then where do you want us? On this edge right here? Okay. So I'm going to give you a certificate. I'll call your name, Alana. Okay. Kolea. Marcia, we'll get that from Ms. Moore. Marley, I think, are there, there's two Marley Davises, right? Are you both Marley Davis? Okay. Jasmine? Jeremiah? Madison? Okay, Leonardo, the side hustler. Genesis? Not here. And Mia? And Smart, I'll give you those. And we will come together with...
Just a little bit more, you'll be fine. You guys want to come over here?
All right. Anyone?
Yep.
Come in before.
Show me those certificates. Perfect.
Well, thank you, guys, so much. Members of the public who would desire to address the Board on any board topic related to board work, assign the roster at the back of the room before 6:30 PM. And now, we have Principal Moore and AP Tunston. Good evening.
Thank you. So thank you, President Seibert, board members, Dr. Berhansel, and Mr. Rogerson. We are very honored to be here tonight and speak about Monterey. In the fall, Monterey will actually be celebrating 50 years. So that is quite a feat. There will be a party. And we would like to give you an early invitation to come join us for that celebration in the fall. It's quite a feat to be a neighborhood school for that long. We're truly a neighborhood school. I'm going to just skip over the mission statement. Our mission, which ties nicely with Harrison School District 2's mission, is to build a foundation for students to grow and achieve. We think that's very important, the growing and the achieving, and we think that we're going above and beyond. We have a great staff that help us build that foundation for our students.
So we were Harrison then. Take a look at that picture.
So that is about 50 years ago.
That is about 50 years ago at Monterey. And this is Monterey now. Very similar pictures. We maintain the same type of diversity. It's always been a diverse school. And without the outfits and the hairdos, this could be the same picture. So some background information about Monterey. Our enrollment this year is about 335 students. Eighty-nine percent of those students have free and reduced lunch, qualify for free and reduced lunch. Thirty-eight percent of our students are CLDE students. Five percent special education students. Sixty-seven percent of our student body is Hispanic. Eleven percent black. Fifteen percent white. Six percent two or more races and one percent other. So our teachers are fabulous teachers. Ninety-two percent of them will be returning for the 2019. One of our teachers is relocating, one teacher transferring in district. Three staff members are Harrison School, High School, District 2, Alana. We're missing one tonight, but eight staff members choice their children or grandchildren into Monterey. We have six teachers who have or are working on their CLDE credential, and three of our teachers have an early childhood K-2 credential.
So a little trivia about Monterey and one of our teachers, we grow them early on because we have a teacher, if you would stand, who Ms. Tunston was her second grade teacher. So when we say we are Harrison, we truly are Harrison. So we're going to switch gears a little bit and talk about data. So as we can see here for the CMAS three-year trend data, we have our ELA and our fifth grade math. For ELA, we're making gains as well as in math. We did have kind of a black eye two years ago in fifth grade math where we had zero percent, but we've rebounded nicely from that. And so we're continuing to grow and achieve our students. If we look at our fifth grade science, we had a little dip and a pretty strong gain over three years. And what's really important here, and I know this is kind of hard for you to see, but this is access growth. So that is how we are measured by the state. And remember that number earlier when Erica said that 38% of our students are CLDE students? So out of that 38%, we have 36 that are NEPS. So they come to us speaking very little English. So the growth that we see in the beginning of the adequate growth percentile here, we can see where our students are growing at that first, the second, and the third levels. And we're a little unique where in other schools you'll see where they're at that third to fourth level or fourth to fifth because they have more of LEPS students, which are the limited English proficient. So they're making their gains at that end. Because we have the non-English speakers, we're growing them, we can see that reflected at the other end. So we had 48 MGP for that growth percentile. The benchmark is 50, and we know that this year we're going to be able to do it. We just have to fight a little harder for it because we have to grow those students a little bit faster than those LEPS students. And speaking of that, we have been on, we were turned around two years ago, and this year we're priority improvement. So we are on the clock in regards to our SPF, and we're very aware of that and working very hard. But I think it's really noteworthy that these people that are sitting over here, the hard work that they have done. Last year, when we got our SPF, and it goes by mean scale score, we missed it by one tenth of a point. One tenth of a point higher would have helped us reach the approaching level and those expectations with the cut point, and it would have earned us an overall 42.2% and an improvement rating, and it would have stopped the clock. What happened was that we have three students that had not been in country long enough. And so the state says, you know, we're not going to punish a school because you are educating students who are new to the country, so we're going to take their scores out. Well, one of the unintended consequences is what if you are growing those students? And we were with two of those students. And had their scores been included, the clock would have stopped. But because they weren't, we appealed it. You have to make a cut somewhere. We just missed it by a tenth of a point. So I think it's due to the hard work of these fabulous people. They did the work. They're growing students that are in the hardest to grow and expected to succeed as their, same as their English-speaking peers, and they did it. So kudos to all of you. And then we're going to switch to CBMs. And CBMs, as you know, are the district measurement, and it's kind of a dipstick, and it lets us know how we're doing as we're progressing through the year. And here, the three-year trend for reading is we are growing steadily across all grade levels for three years in reading. We have a little up and down in writing, but you know, one thing, if you, Erica used to be an instructional coordinator, and her specialty is training staff. So we have spent all year with our staff and Erica doing monthly trainings on writing to get those scores up. So we had a little dip, and we're going back up, and we continue to increase. Math, slow and steady. I would rather be the tortoise than the hare and make continual progress instead of racing ahead and up and down. So we're making steady progress. When we look at the growth model here, it's a little bit hard to read. For ELA, you can say we kind of rise, we kind of went down in growth, and we went back up a little bit in our growth at 43, knowing we really want to hit that 50 in benchmark for growth. Three-year trend for math with a median growth percentile, again, we were almost there this year in regards to math, but I know we're going to do it this year.
And we like to have fun, too. So we work hard, but we play hard when we can. So these are just a few photos of, we've had guest readers of our science fair, blindfold bowling, which was fun. But we do like to enjoy time with our families and our staff and our community as well. So to talk about some of our partnerships, a lot of the opportunities that we offer for our students, we get through partnerships with different organizations in the country and state, around the city and state. One that we really are particularly excited about, because this happens next week, is our partnership with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. So they provide for us to take an overnight camping trip. We're going to the sand dunes next Thursday. This will be our third year taking fourth graders on an overnight camping trip to the sand dunes. It has never been warm. Over the three years, it has never been warm. But they are troopers. We have a great time. They learn a lot. They're really well-prepared this time. Our fourth grade team has prepared them to get to know Colorado history, and they're going to have a great time. The grant also provides a family night for us, which they bring in everything. All we do is show up. They bring in animals, they bring in archery, they bring in all kinds of things. And students learn to use archery, and we get someone trained in archery as well, our PE teacher.
They paid for our PE teacher to become certified archery. They provided, we have a whole set of archery equipment. We have the Kevlar backdrops, everything they provided and trained for our school, so we're very fortunate there.
It is. This year, we got to go to, we have fourth and fifth graders going to the Colorado Springs Conservatory. They are troopers. They're up and at Panorama Middle School at 6:45 every morning to board that bus with, along with Centennial and Panorama students. But they have been going to learn different theatrical arts, recording arts, piano, and they really have been working hard, and they're excited. And like I said, to get up four days a week and be somewhere at 6:45, turn around, come to school and be ready to start, I really commend those students. We also have had a partnership with Pike's Peak Library District. As mentioned, many of our students are CLDE students, so English is not their first language. Well, English is not their parents as well. So one of the things that we've had at Monterey is the Pike's Peak Library District teaching English to our parents and other members of the community. So we have a classroom for them. They come in and they learn along with us. They come in, they practice their English when they're coming into the office to talk with us. But it's been a great partnership, and we've had many parents who have come through there and are now speaking English with their teachers. They're asking to learn more about vocabulary. How do I talk to my students' teachers? What kind of questions do I ask? What vocabulary do I need so that I can speak with my, with the teachers for my students?
Pike's Peak Library District actually won a state award with Colorado for this partnership that we have in their adult education and literacy program. So they, we've partnered with them for five to six years now, so we find it very beneficial.
We also have been sending, we've had a partnership with Starbase for the last three years, and we've been sending our fifth graders to Peterson Air Force Base, and they've really enjoyed and learned a lot, hands-on science, hands-on activities, robotics, all kinds of things that we wouldn't be able to provide for them in a day, so they spend the whole day there, and they come back so excited. It's been a real opportunity to increase science education for our students and really open up their world to possibilities. Another one that we've been working with, with our art teacher, is the Spring Hill Suites with the Marriott fundraising. We've gotten art supplies from there. They do a fundraiser every year. They hang our artwork in the lobby, and those supplies are delivered to us and available for students to use. Our art teacher provides the posters and things that they put in their library, and they're wonderful. Also, the Young Environmental Stewards, which is the Catamount, the Catamount Yes Club, they're actually not here today because they are at Bear Creek Park. So it's just another opportunity for them to get some science education and do some after-school activities that are really fun. Catamount does everything, including training our teachers and providing all of the materials. And so that's where they are today until 6 o'clock at Bear Creek, doing a fun, hands-on field trip. And that's where their teachers, good for them. Every year for Thanksgiving, for the last two years exactly, we've worked with the Organized Generals Motorcycle Club, where they provide Thanksgiving dinners and baskets for our students and families and for other schools as well. We worked with Pike's Peak this year. And this year, this past full year, we were chosen Coats for Kids, where each one of our kids received a coat that they have a big gala. You donate coats to get in, and all the coats go to our students. And so we were able to give each one of our students a winter coat, which we remind them to have one every day.
But he is not a coat.
Right. And we know you have a coat. That's how we remind them every day. We know you have a coat.
And finally, we're excited to announce that this year, we just found out that we will be partnering with UCCS, and we will be participating in the teacher residency program, in which we will carefully screen and select five teacher candidates, preparing to embark on their senior year at UCCS. They will be assigned to one of our mentor teachers in our building. They will spend the entire year getting deep mentoring experience, really what school's all about, that you don't necessarily, you learn the pedagogy in school, but you don't learn the practicality. So we'll have the opportunity to do that and grow our own from within. So we're very excited. We've started screening, and so we'll announce those candidates that are selected in the next couple of weeks. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
Well, I'd open it up to fellow board members. I always do that first because if I don't, I always get accused of taking everyone else's question, so.
Sure, I'll take it away. First of all, did you all coordinate this?
Yes.
This is adorable. They came in strength. I love it. Really quickly, just the numbers with the PPLD partnership. What percent of your families do you feel, not even feel, but know attend?
It's very hard to gauge. Probably 25 to 30%. The rest are community members. So we, it's open to throughout the community. We have done evening classes as well as daytime classes. Right now, we currently offer them during the daytime two days a week. And it's always, it's very fluid because PPLD never knows where the best site will be. So next year, we will do one class during the day and the other two will be in the evening.
Well, I do, I asked that question, but I also want to commend you for that very thoughtful, just embracing of the community and really, it's an extraordinary partnership from my understanding, and I just, I'm really proud to be able to say that our district has that thanks to you all, so thank you.
Mike, you are really out here doing fantastic things in the community. You are exposing children to arts, females to science, males to all of these things, and I am like, I'm shook. Like I'm, I was like watching these slides go by, and I'm like, they're doing everything! I love it. And then I want to commend you on your retention rate. That is one of the bigger things in every school, every district, every classroom. Keeping teachers can be hard, so you keeping 90-plus percent, fantastic. Whatever you're doing, continue to do it. Thrive, we love you.
Thank you.
We love you.
Thank you.
That's Naisha. So I have a question. Everything is wonderful. It's nice to see you're increasing, and I know that you are a core of your community. I think my question is, as we focus on our English language learners and those families, are we doing anything to make sure that those students are able to be truly bilingual in their native language, since being bilingual truly means reading, writing, and speaking two languages? But we're only focusing on teaching the English portion, but to really set those students up for success in the future and job opportunities and things of that nature, they have to be truly bilingual. So do we have any programs that are able to keep them rooted in their first language while they're growing in their second language?
We do not. And there are many different models. Currently, we are the full immersion model, but it is absolutely something that would be worth exploring, especially because what ends up happening is sometimes we have students that come to us that aren't fluent in English or Spanish, and that becomes tough, especially when it comes to reading. They may speak the social language, but the academic language and either one may be tough, and so...
No, no, I agree.
I would be excited to explore it.
I was taught Spanglish, and unfortunately, I don't speak English or Spanish, so, and I didn't actually know which words were which, growing up. I didn't know that one word wasn't English and one word wasn't Spanish, and I probably still really don't. But I just recognize that in a workforce, we ask people to be bilingual.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, that really means reading, writing, and speaking two languages, not just speaking and understanding of two languages, so.
And we find that, you know, the social language develops first, so we have students other than Spanish, Arabic, for example, that will begin speaking Spanish before they do English because the social language, that's they're interacting with their peers at recess and lunch, and so that was interesting when I came to Monterey to discover that.
Yeah, I had a foreign exchange student, and it was interesting to know that he spoke so many languages, and not only did he speak them, but he could read and write in those languages. And then when he took the TOEFL test, he wasn't adequate in any of them. And so it was shocking to me to know the level that someone needs to be on to truly be successful in that realm. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, you have some wonderful partnerships, and I can have to echo what Naisha said. 92% retention is just wonderful. We need, we need more of that.
Absolutely, yeah. The key to the success is building that team and having that stability and having constant improvement is absolutely the direction to go. One of the questions that I was going to ask was, you had high 60% non-English speaking. How many languages do you...
Actually, so if we go back, so 67% are Hispanic, 38% are English language learners. So out of that 67, 38% are English language learners.
Keeping teachers can be hard, so you keeping 90-plus percent, fantastic. Whatever you're doing, continue to do it. Thrive, we love you.
Thank you.
We love you.
Thank you.
That's Naiaja. So, I have a question. Everything is wonderful. It's nice to see you're increasing and, and I know that you are a core of your community. I think my question is, is we focus on our English language learners and those families, are we doing anything to make sure that those students are able to be truly bilingual in their native language since being bilingual truly means reading, writing, and speaking two languages? But, we're only focusing on teaching the English portion, but to really set those students up for success in the future and job opportunities and things of that nature, they have to be truly bilingual. So, do we have any programs that are able to keep them rooted in their first language while they're growing in their second language?
We do not. And, there are many different models. Currently, we are the full immersion model, but it, it is absolutely something that would be worth exploring, especially because what ends up happening is sometimes we have students that come to us that aren't fluent in English or Spanish. And, that becomes tough, especially when it comes to reading. They may speak the social language, but the academic language and either one may be, be tough and so.
No, no, I agree.
I would be excited to explore it.
I was taught Spanglish and unfortunately, I don't speak English or Spanish, so. And, I didn't actually know which words were which, growing up. I, I didn't know that one word wasn't English and one word wasn't Spanish and I probably still really don't. But, I just recognized that in a workforce, we ask people to be bilingual.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, that really means reading, writing, and speaking two languages, not just speaking and understanding of two languages, so.
And, we find that, you know, the social language develops first. So, we have students other than Spanish, Arabic, for example, that will begin speaking Spanish before they do English because the social language. That's their interacting with their peers at recess and lunch and so, that was interesting when I came to Monterey to discover that.
Yeah. I had a foreign exchange student and it was interesting to know that he spoke so many languages. And, not only did he speak them, but he could read and write in those languages. And then, when he took the TOEFL test, he wasn't adequate in any of them. And so, it was shocking to me to, to know the level that someone needs to be on to truly be successful in that realm. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, you have some wonderful partnerships and I can, have to echo what Naiaja said. 92% retention is just wonderful. We need, we need more of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. The key to the success is building that team and having that stability and, and having constant improvement is, is absolutely the direction to go. One of the questions that I was going to ask was of, you had high 60% non-English speaking. How many languages do you?
Actually, so if we go back, so 67% are Hispanic, 38% are English language learners. So, out of that 67, 38% are English language learners.
Did you have a follow-up question to that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I might have missed it. No?
No. Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Like I said, Monterey is close to home for me. That was my block, growing up. For all of you guys, Ms. Tunston actually taught my kids as a teacher to, believe it or not, like connected to the, I, I just have to say that, that yes. From parent to, to board member, it's interesting how we grow as a community. So, thank you guys very much. We appreciate all of your work.
Board, I would just like to say one thing. And, the principals can recognize this. They are actually not supposed to present till May, but on Friday, I called and said, "Our group that's supposed to go tonight can't go for an emergency purpose." And, they got it together. So, principals, no pressure, but.
We are Harrison. They got everything together.
Yeah, they do.
Glad I wasn't called. You're right.
Okay, moving on. Item 5, Board Vacancy. As many of you have noticed over the past period of time, we've had an empty seat since the departure of Mr. Josh Hitchcock, who relocated. So, this evening, we have a resolve to that. Item 5.1.
Let them let out.
We can start while they're walking out, it's okay. Colorado Revised Statute 2231-129, 2. I hereby duly appoint Mr. Keith Varney to the Office of School Board Director. So, a little, a little bit of background, we've gone beyond 60 days. So, state statute mandates that the, that the Board President appoint. The Board has interviewed several candidates. We had several very highly qualified candidates. It was a, a difficult decision. I didn't just pick this, even though by statute, I appoint them. This was a collaborative decision by the Board. Multiple Board members interviewed several, we weighed many different aspects of it and, and came to the conclusion that this would be the best fit for the team at this, at this time. So, Mr. Varney, if you would come to the microphone? We move to item 5.2, Swearing In. I don't need to, as long as, if you raise your hand. I, Keith Varney.
I, Keith Varney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Director.
Of the Office of School Board Director.
As required by law.
As required by law.
And will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
Hey, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Sweet. Kill ourselves trying to walk over there.
You gonna let Mr. Varney say anything? You gonna let him say anything?
I, I. I was going to say aside too.
Kind of putting you on the spot, would you like to, would you like to address?
Well, you'll be glad to know I don't have a speech. I, I'm just thrilled to be here. When I heard the, the vacancy was open, I was at the superintendent's meeting, or.
Public forum.
Forum that we had like six weeks ago. And, I, that was the first meeting I'd been to in years and it was just electric, just being in the room with everybody in the district and it was, I walked out that night after talking with Ms. Pew. I was like, ooh, very excited. And then, I, I, I thought about it, I was like, okay, stop, think. And then, I kind of went the other way. I was like, you remember what it was like being on the board? I was like, yeah. I said, there were some times that were good, there were some times that were rough, but at the end of the day, it was what we were doing for the students here that made the difference. And, if I can do that, help out just in any little way for a little time, I, I'll be glad to do that, so. Glad to be back.
So, also, to expound on that a little bit, the, the term that Mr. Varney is taking over is up for reelection this November. So, he will have to either rerun or have a very brief term in, in seat. But, that's, that's just how being appointed to a, a seat runs. There are two seats that are up and, and three in the, the biennial off-year, so that's, that's the seat that he's occupying. So, with that, we will adjourn into executive session for election of Board Offices. And, I'm going to have to slide back to the law.
There's no law.
Mm-mm.
So, pursuant to, I would move to convene an executive session to discuss Board Executive. It does, actually, I read it today. CRS 26, 246402. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I was eating candy.
The attendees will be Mr. Keith Varney, Ms. Kelly Pomus, Mr. Steve Seibert, Ms. Linda Pew, and Ms. Jeanne Orozco. Okay, reconvening in regular session after 1 minute 23 seconds in executive session.
Record time. We did something quickly.
We have by secret ballot, and maybe somewhat presumptively sat in our same chairs, but by secret ballot, we voted on Board Positions. Ms. Armida, if you would read the results.
Yes, sir. President, Mr. Steve Seibert. Vice President, Mrs. Linda Pew. Secretary, Ms. Jeanne Orozco. And Treasurer, Ms. Kelly Pomus. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Item 6.1, we have our Scholar Board Representative share out. Julie is not with us this evening, but we have Ms. Naiaja Major.
Is that on the record that I miss Julie? She is not here and I miss her? Oh.
Julie is ill this evening. She's actually just not skipping. She's, she's, uh, came down with something, so she's at, at home ill.
Well, then, I don't miss her as much. She's getting better.
That sounds like something I would say.
Teaching professionalism here.
Me? Um, I don't have too much for our OEs because our OEs from last month overlap with this month. So, anything that I would share for this month, Julie would have shared last month. So, the only thing I really have, is kind of very near and dear to my heart. This term that I sit in is a two-year term. So, I was here my whole junior year and my whole senior year and as I'll be leaving for college, I will be vacating this beautiful comfy chair. And, on the morning of Friday, April 12th, I spoke with the Rising Juniors in hopes that one of them would love to come sit on this board to fill my position with Julie next year being their mentor. So, Julie this year is a junior and she will be the senior slot and then I will have another junior and they will learn under her, which I think is such a beautiful thing. So, I just wanted to give a big thank you to Ms. Davis, she's right here, Mr. Craddock, Mr. Carr, and everyone who was involved in getting those applications out, everyone who was involved in informing kiddos like why this is such a fantastic thing, because this is the biggest thing I stress to everybody. Like, I didn't know what this was before someone told me. My counselor was like, here's an application. I was like, what is it? Once and for all. She was like, just fill it out. And then, so, in the application, it kind of tells you what it is to be a student on the Board of Education. You can go on the Harrison School District website and you read up about what it is that you do, why you're doing what you do. And, it, if it doesn't drive you to passion, then this ain't for you. So, that is why I'm super glad that there are so many applicants. And I think the day that we went, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was already five applications turned in and a bunch more even in the works. And so, the process that I think, that I remember going through is a paper application and then a face-to-face with the Board, like a interview. And, that's probably the most intimidating part, so I wish all of them luck and I'm super excited to meet the person who is going to make a difference. So, again, big thanks, super excited, can't wait for school year. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Board. Does anyone have anything for Ms. Major this evening?
Yeah, what school are you going to go to?
I've been accepted to quite a few schools. But, I am thinking UNC out in Greeley to get my K-12 and a BME, which is a Bachelor in Music Education, and then come back to teach in district. Super excited.
Thank you, Ms. Major.
I will just, I want to say thank you to you as well. You've been really helpful through this process. And, Naiaja works, has graduated in December and works and still is very much a part of the School Board. And I think it's, it's really important that you all know that. And, out of her busy schedule, took time to come to Sierra and thank you again, Mr. Craddock, for allowing us the space. The applicant, it's going to, it's going to be a competitive process, which is really great, I think, for the Board and for the district. But, Naiaja had a lot to do with it, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you all.
I'll save all of my comments for our changing over of the, of the Board Members.
I'll cry, like.
I know, I see, I'm preparing, I'm preparing you for it so that, yeah.
Like my eyelashes going to fall off.
I'll get you some better glue.
Thanks, girl.
All right. Item 7, Comments from the Public. Members of the public who desire to address the Board on any topic related to Board work are welcome to do so at this time. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes, to appoint a spokes, a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and to supplement verbal presentations with written reports if necessary or desired. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Although the Board does not respond to any public comment immediately, we will review the information presented and provide responses as necessary. This evening, we have students from Fox Meadow Middle School address Fox Meadow Middle School speaking about, says Miss Musical? Is that?
Come on up, guys.
Good evening.
How are you doing, guys?
Good.
Good.
On the microphone.
There you go. Perfect.
Did the light turn green? There you go.
It's okay, we all have technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties.
Is it working?
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Hello, we're a couple of students from Fox Meadow Middle School and we are putting out a production for Once on this Island Junior. We are a few cast members from the musical. Okay, I guess I'm going. Okay. Hi, I'm Evelyn. And, I play Papa Gay, who is the goddess of death, goddess or god, gender does not matter. And, Josh. And, I can bet with the other gods that death is stronger than love.
Hi, I'm Joshua and I play Ague, the god of water. And, I, I start a storm, which like creates the entire plot, which sends T-Moon on her journey.
I'm, I'm Claire and I play T-Moon, the protagonist, who proves through a fun-filled journey that death is stronger than love. And, we want to invite you to our May 4th and 5th musical production of Once on this Island Junior at Harrison High School. We've been in this program with Shine Nation, because we partner with Shine Nation and Fox Meadow Middle School, for two years now. And, we've all learned that we use, we can use, to achieve goals, we use hard work and dedication. And then, we have fun while doing it because we all enjoy this as much as anyone would.
The drama club and the drama classes and all that, they pretty much help us like, like.
Express.
Express our, like voices and things like that, yeah.
Um, so. Okay, one more, you have to go. It's okay. So, also, one more thing, we also learn lessons throughout the, what we learn and how we learn and also from the productions that we put on. Like, this show specifically, we've learned how to share our voice against prejudice and also be courageous in what we think is right. So, we want to invite you to come see our production and learn these lessons on May 4th and 5th. Come find out why we tell the story.
Yay.
You guys, so much for inviting us. That sounds wonderful. Hopefully, we'll have a, a nice representation. They're, they're all going to make fun of me afterward for saying this because they always do.
No, no.
And, and I always love relating to the, to the kids. I'm a Harrison High School grad, 1987. And, I performed in a, in a, in a play and was the stage manager.
Proud one.
And that's a, a very proud, yes. And, I only say that to say that, all of the things you do besides reading, writing, and arithmetic form who you are. You use part of those, I use part of that. I'm not this, I'm not the Board President. I act it every day. So, being in theater helped me act where, where I'm at today. So, embrace those, embrace those times, take those experiences and, and they'll grow you for the rest of your lives.
Thank you.
And hopefully, you'll see several of us there. Does anybody else have anything for them?
I'm even going to one-up you. Not only have I performed, but I have done that musical. I was Erezuli, okay? So, not only will I be there, but I will be watching.
Erezuli's really good. She's not here right now, but she's really good.
Oh, we know. Awesome. Yes, I'm, we're super excited. So, like make sure to leave your little flyers for us, so we are reminded and anyone who wants one, please grab them from these beautiful faces and we're super excited to be there.
Do you want me to hand them out to you now or do you?
Yeah, please. And I totally got the why we tell the story reference because, I don't, be right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, is Sierra that weekend or is it?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8. We have 8.1, we have the Superintendent Consent Agenda, we have 8.1 Personnel Report. Are there any further questions on the Personnel Report? Thank you, Dr. Bert Hansel, for following up with our conversation and some historical data.
Dr. Claudio, but.
Oh, okay. Well, she could have taken the, the credit, but thank you. We have item 8.2, the Financial Report. Are there any other questions or discussion that we need to have?
No.
We have item 8.3, the Resolution on Easement of the Harrison Property. I would just like to, to clarify that we've had several discussions. Mr. Wilsey has explained to us very clearly the situation there. We've had some, some great negotiations and a great partner. And, it's, it's on consent, but the, the Board wholeheartedly is in favor of this from discussions from several work sessions. Are there any further discussion about the, the easement that we, we need to have? No? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda items as stated.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further questions or discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Simply because I haven't seen any of it.
Well, okay, thank you. We have a, an abstance by Mr. Varney in the minutes. Item 9, we have the Board Consent Agenda. Item 9.1, the Approval of the 2019-2020 Board Calendar. Any other comments? Approval of minutes, there have been a couple of corrections made. Do we have those, those made?
Yes.
Item 9.3, OE5 Indicator. OE12. OE12. OE12, OE2, OE7 indicators, OE9 indicators, OE11 indicators. Now, not all of these are from that month, there was some, a couple of little clarifications on a couple of them that are carryover, but those have been made. Are there any other additions, corrections, deletions, or discussions about any of the OEs? And for any of you who haven't attended a work session, it seems like we breeze over these very quickly, and there's a lot of information. These are discussed vigorously and thoroughly in a work session, sometime to the chagrin of cabinet. Their patience with the board, in some cases, is exemplary, so thank you for that. But I just feel the need to mention that there's a tremendous amount of discussion at sometimes multiple work sessions before these come to be disposed of on consent. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I just made the motion.
Oh, I get to make the motion, okay. I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda items as stated.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Roscoe, seconded by Mrs. Pugh. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Monitoring board performance, we have item 10.1, our annual work plan. Has everyone had a chance to review the attached work plan?
Yes.
Any other? Stayed from, okay. Any other discussion, corrections, clarification?
I think just one point that we had discussed at our retreat, and I think that's, once we get the students' board representatives on board, is to talk through what next year will look like in terms of our time at schools with our student board representatives. But I don't, that conversation's not here, just wanna put that out there as a point of conversation we're having.
Thank you, Ms. Pomas. Any other discussion? We have legislative updates. We really don't have a legislative liaison, as in the past, that's really, really delved into it. But we have had a very active couple of weeks and some very exciting news. And I'm going to put her on the spot a little bit for our legislative updates. And a big thank you for the dedication that Dr. Berhansel has had. So with that, I'll let you explain what I'm talking about.
So what President Seabird's talking about is our all-day funding kindergarten. So in our district, as we know, we fund it because we believe our kids deserve that full-day experience. And you know, in legislature right now, it's talking about, are they gonna give us funding for a whole person for a kindergartner, or .5 like we have now? So, I was invited to testify in the House Committee. The House Committee voted unanimously, they thought they'd have three noes, and after testimony, they turned around and had a unanimous yes. So that is huge. Then I went to the Senate, and the Senate passed it unanimously, and now it got sent to appropriations. Also, Ms. Becker, our CFO, testified in the Senate yesterday. And so, we've had a huge presence, because we are advocating for all of your little kindergarteners. We need to make sure we set 'em off on the right foot, and it's looking very positive. We know this is Governor Polis's baby also in his campaigning, and so we're excited to stand next to him and advocate for our students. So, we're hoping we should know something in the next few days, but it's looking good.
It's very exciting news. That's something as a district, sometimes we isolate ourselves from the rest of our community, but as we come together and our voices are heard at the state legislature, it certainly does make a difference to be heard from. I don't know how many people in this room have ever written their senator about something, having taken the time to actually write them, or as board president, how many people approach me over the past six years, I could actually count. And it really does make more of an impression than you could absolutely imagine. So as, from, on behalf of the board, I'm so grateful for the testimony that Dr. Berhansel has shared and the positive outcome that we're looking at. This will tremendously benefit the district and all of those little kindergarteners. Thank you. Well, with no other legislative updates, we'll move to item 10.3, the National School Board Association Annual Conference. So I'll open up the floor to our other, my other board members to run down and give a quick synopsis of, anybody?
I wasn't there.
I didn't go. You weren't there, I can't imagine why.
It seemed like generally, and maybe if there's other observations, there was kind of three major focus of the, most of the presentations had to do with the socially-emotional learning, equity, and safety and security of the schools. That seemed to be the three major topics of the presentations. The musical performances by the students were just to blow you away, especially that singing, the singing brothers from Georgia, oh my gosh. They were all outstanding, just amazing. I had a chance to attend several things, talking about preparing students to be ready for kindergarten, you know, what kinds of things can be done with families to help get them ready, preparing students for the workplace of tomorrow, the importance of relationships. And I attended one that talked a lot about happiness, and makes me think about, maybe it's okay to have fun in school, because relationships and happiness make you a better learner. I mean, we talk about all these fancy terms, but maybe happiness is a simpler way of addressing a whole bunch of these things. Dr. Brian Marks was a speaker at the Black Council Luncheon, a very impressive speaker, referenced how, you know, we all have implicit bias, and the important thing is that we can make a difference in how that manifests. We have a choice, by conscious effort, we can go, okay, how do I deal with people appropriately despite whatever implicit bias I may have received over my years of growing up? I think that was, that was the majority. There was a couple others that were not quite as exciting, but those things particularly stood out for me.
Having gone through many years, it's amazing how there are trends in education, national trends. Those of you who have been in it for decades have heard all the buzzwords for years and years. And for us, by and large, are not educators, Ms. Pomas a little bit more closely to the field, but I build houses, I don't run schools. And so for us to have an opportunity for personal growth in that environment, connect with other boards, see how they operate around the country, different laws, always amazes me, from board terms, states that have no term limits, to the amount some states are stipend for boards, how they govern, the things that they issue. Some of them are a great, it's a great litmus test to where we are at, what we do well, but it also broadens your mind to, what do we really do? You know, and I went back to our mission statement, graduate, college, and career-ready. How do we know? And we look beyond graduation. We love handing out diplomas, absolutely probably one of my favorite times of the year, get to shake the hands of all the graduates across the stage. Ms. Pugh shook my daughter's hand, gave her a hug, and handed her her diploma years ago. And you see where they develop. I think where we fail is the measurement of the next 10 years. Are we successful? We don't know, if we don't know what they're doing in two years, or five years, or four years. And so, sort of, maybe an epiphany to me was, do we really know? And I sat in a couple sessions, I'm not gonna go into specifics of any session, but I think for the reflection of a board, do we know? You know, we pat ourselves on the back, I love seeing the kids, and we all talk about the things that are happening, but I really wanna take a hard look at myself and a board, are we really doing what we say we're doing? And how do we measure that as a board? So, that's kind of what I brought back.
I think we all brought back something way different. It's interesting to see thousands and thousands of people just focused on education in one place. It's pretty unreal. And to Mr. Seabird's point, I see people that have sat on boards for 38 years. I'm like, I wonder how effective you can be in this place for 38 years, and just recognizing that there's a reason why we have term limits and what that looks like. I know that I partake in the Native American breakfast or lunch, and the Hispanic breakfast, and just looking at how we grow diversity in those places. I had expressed this to the board at our work session. You know, I feel like our time could be better spent investing in our district and really bringing back some great speakers to speak to all of you and us, and look at next steps and how we can really invest in our district, instead of just going and hearing the ideas and the trends. But someone coming in and really teaching us, what are those next steps that you can actually put into practice in your district, versus me listening to 10 different speakers over two or three days, and really not getting any meat out of it, just ideas, versus having someone come in and give us the real meat of it, so we can put it into practice, and that would be able to afford all of us in this room, something more than just ideas. And so, I think it's great to hear what other boards are doing, and it's great to meet all of these wonderful people, but I think as an investment in ourselves, as board members, and an investment in each of you, I think our time would be better spent really just trying it even one year, to bring in some great speakers that can move us into the next place, versus us all going somewhere and listening to an hour, an hour and a half of multitude of speakers. And so, I had expressed that openly, I just think that we could really gain a lot of knowledge and put it into action, versus just gaining knowledge and coming back and telling you, I gained some knowledge, but you are the experts in making things actionable, so what does that really look like? So, and I think that's the way I see NASB. It's great to see all those people, but I think that there's better use of our time in our education and our educators, so.
That's why we're a strong board, we see things from all different perspectives and come together, so. Very good, any other?
No, that was NASB.
Nope, all right. Item 11, matters reserved for board action. We have 11.1, Atlas Charter School Contract. Which I see back there, hi, guys. So again, we've talked about this, it's been to the attorney back and forth. We had actually asked for quite a bit more clarification from our last work session. We really wanted to be able to make the best informed decision that we could as a board, so appreciate the information that came to us. We had a kind of a pros and cons, and I know that there was a 5 in 10. My heart is, they're a great partner, do we-
Explain 5 in 10, please.
Oh, five years and 10 years in the, yes, for the contract. Five years was suggested by staff. Atlas has requested 10 years for their new MOU. And so we were presented at the last work session, information. We asked for more clarifying. I had even said, I didn't know enough to even be able to make an informed decision, or what information I didn't have. And so, it was brought to the board. We were able to, at a retreat Saturday, have further discussion of that information, and have really had some clarifying points. So I thank staff, and I thank Atlas for that information. It was really, I don't wanna say a difficult decision, it really was a very difficult decision. Most everything we do comes down to just very fine points, a little bit of minutia is what takes something either one way or the other. And so I think, I think as a board, we have a pretty, a pretty good consensus after all the information. And one of the things that weighed on me, my dad always said, you don't take, you don't pay for legal advice not to take it, and only fools do that. And so, really for me, taking the advice of the legal team of the district lands me personally to where my decision on the contract will be. Would anybody else like to weigh in on?
Yeah, did you wait until I put the candy in my mouth?
I did, I saw you pop it in, and-
No.
Really a chewy one too, probably.
No, I'd just like to say, you know, I'm a huge supporter of Atlas and the work that they do. We needed, we had to have a lot of questions answered around this, because I didn't understand, and I needed a lot of clarity in regards to why, one versus the other, why five years versus 10 years, and what that looks like. In my mind, not having any knowledge, I'm like, why wouldn't we do 10 years? We have a great partner, and what does that look like? And we're investing in our community. And really, I needed to understand, why do we have these MOUs, and how are they set up that way, and what is in the best interest of our students and our community and our district? And how do we hold each other accountable? And so I really appreciate everyone answering all of our questions, because they are always so lengthy. But that doesn't take away from the respect that we have for Atlas as partners, and what they do for our youth in our community.
That was it, candy gone?
I'm done, my candy's all gone now.
Any further discussion? Nope? Are we taking action this evening for? So not having a written-
Motion?
-motion on here? I would move to approve a renewal contract for the term of five years for Atlas Charter School. Is that legally what we need?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded? Madam Secretary, would you take a roll call vote?
Yep. Ms. Pomas?
I'm recusing myself.
Okay. Mr. Seabird?
Aye.
Ms. Pugh?
Aye.
Ms. Roscoe? Aye. Ms. Major doesn't get to vote, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I know. And Mr. Varney?
I'm going to abstain again.
Yeah, sorry, I just was not including you on purpose.
I'm way over here, I'm sorry.
All right.
All those opposed? Or I guess nay would've been.
Yeah.
That was dumb habit there. Motion carries. I just wanna further say that we have 10 years of faith in you. This is by no means a belief that, it is not there. Timing with the elementary was a large part of our discussion. Certainly advice from the attorney was the tipping point for me. I was actually leaning towards 10 years. But again, after having the best protection for the district as a signer, I felt that that was probably the way to go. I really look forward to 10, 15, 30 years of partnerships with you. So by no means take the message that this is a lack of faith, or belief, or partnership with that from the board. Okay, item 12. We have renewal of the Aspen Group contract, item 12.1. Anytime we make a decision for representing the taxpayers in a monetary decision, I take that very, very seriously. There has to be value in every penny. One of the reasons that we talk about the NSBA and options for that, what is the best use of taxpayer dollars? One of the, one of the companies that the board contracts with as a consultant is Aspen Group International. And we deliberate this, again, there's been much of the discussion about this at the board retreat. And we quantify, what value does this bring to the board, to the district, to be able to represent? And again, we had a very positive discussion about it. There's been no changes over several years. They haven't increased the price, which I have a lot of respect for the group for doing. They actually bring a tremendous insight and value to the board. I believe they have, they always have a, they take a different look, and they always, they never tell us what to do, but they empower us, as a great teacher would, to make our own decision and give us information from an aspect that we may not always see. Another part of that is that they work with boards all over the country and all over the world, actually, in several different countries. So, they have a, they have a perspective of boards from a view that we would never be able to have, and I tremendously value that. So, I would recommend to the board that we continue their contract. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I have a comment. I'm looking at, 4.1 has the wrong year on it, the wrong dates.
4.1?
On the contract.
It says 2018 to 2019, we're kind of done with that.
We will have to have an amended contract before we vote. We'll table this to May meeting. May meeting with a corrected contract. Good catch. Are the dates of the signatures 4/12?
Yes. Those are okay. So, we have to wait until it's renewed?
Well, yes, we'll wait for a correction, because this is a signed copy by the Aspen Group. So, we'll have to have another, a corrected copy before we sign it.
I'd also like to say that, you know, I agree with Steve. It's coherent governance, I think, functions extraordinarily well. And the Aspen Group is the one who's supported us through that. But I don't know that it's always intuitive, and it's really easy to all of a sudden kind of go down the rabbit hole. It's like, wait a minute, why is this not working like it should? And they're excellent for helping us relook how we're doing things and get us back to what coherent governance should be. And I think it's money well invested, and I was pleased that it continued the four years I was off the board.
Any other comments?
No, really, I think they do a good job. I think last year, I really questioned this contract, only being on the board for probably six months at that time. And after sitting another year with them, they really helped bring us back. If they weren't in place, we would be picking out all your paint colors in your buildings and buying trashcans and finding your lunch trays and really in places we really don't belong. And so, they really help us stay focused on results and remind us why we're here and where to be most purposeful and meaningful in the job that we do and not be all up in each of your business every day. So, you should really thank them, they do a great job.
And they're not short to chastise us either. Where we have failings or we're not doing our job, believe me, we get called on the carpet. And I have a lot of respect for them for their ability to kindly direct us or chastise us or redirect us where necessary. So, okay, that will be tabled until the May regular business meeting. And I will be in contact with them for that. Okay, I will. Dr. Berhansel and Mr. Roderson, do we need to adjourn to executive session for further discussion? Or do you feel that we were resolved in? For either item? Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any further business? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Everyone, have a good evening.